Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular scheduled work session for June 21st, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
What mine?
Ms. Burner, if you would call roll, please.
Did you print one out for yourself?
Yes, I stole Mr. Bridge's agenda. Hold on just a second. Okay.
Oh, you share it.
Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
Here.
Councilwoman Eggleston.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilman Cobb.
Here.
Councilman Rodewald.
Here.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. And tonight's invitation will be done by Councilman Cobb.
Dear Father, give us the power of the mayor of the city. Yeah, not the power, excuse me. Give us the strength to do what we feel is right for our citizens and what they would want. Also, watch over all of our city employees, watch over our first responders, our fire EMS and our deputy sheriffs. Also, watch over our military. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Praise your agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
This is Mayor, I'm going to just write you that thing is not down the lead email, so I don't know.
Okay. Well, there's, you can, you're more than welcome to look at mine. There's not much on it. So, all right, so moving on, action, we need action on the, let's see, my words. Action on the work session minutes for 6:00, 7:21.
Oh, no, that should have been. Yeah, that should not be there. It says NA. I have no clue how that got on here. So you don't have any minutes?
No, it's work session. Is it not supposed? Oh, they're supposed to be carried over to the next meeting. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, good call. All right. Communication is none. City manager to report. Comments from members of the public.
Must have been on the other one, too, prior to that one, too.
Comments from members of the public. Comments, public? All right, public, thank you. Committee reports none. Down to resolution, ordinances will be done in regular session. Other business legislation discussion. Mr. Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, and city staff. So we have quite a few resolutions. Some are a mix of intro, some were introduced at the last meeting in action. So we have Resolution 2021-12R. That would be introduced and voted tonight. That is a resolution appointing the city manager as a designee for the City of New Carlisle's mandatory public records training required by the Ohio Public Records Act. That is a resolution. We have Ordinance 2021-16. That was introduced on June 6th with a public hearing in action tonight. That is an ordinance authorizing the City of New Carlisle to lease property owned by the city. We have Ordinance 2021-17. That was also introduced at the last council meeting on June 7th, and that would be public hearing in action tonight. That is an ordinance supplementing certain appropriations contained in the New Carlisle City Ordinance 2021-01. And those, all those supplements have to deal with some tax incentives that are really hard to budget for the beginning of the year until we get their taxes. So we do have to supplement that to actually pay them on their tax incentive. We have Ordinance 2021-19 that was also introduced on June 7th with public hearing in action tonight. That is an ordinance amending Chapter 280 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of New Carlisle, Ohio, for the purposes of establishing a mayor's court. And that is the big legislation piece that enacts our codes to be updated to allow for a mayor's court. We have an introduction tonight with public and hearing action on July 6th. That is Ordinance 2021-20. An ordinance amending, an ordinance amending Ordinance 2020-07 for the purpose of making the city iPad use policy effective as to additional city board members and to correct a scribbler's error. And then we have Ordinance 2021-21. That is introduction tonight with public hearing in action on July 6th. That is an ordinance adopting the tax budget for the City of New Carlisle for fiscal year beginning January 21, 2022, and submitting the same to the auditor of Clark County, Ohio. As we know from past years, our tax budget is the very first thing that we do to start our budgetary process for 2022. Those numbers more than likely will change throughout the process, but again, this is step one for us to get to our operating budget. And that is all for legislation.
All right. Counsel, any questions or comments regarding the issues and the subjects at hand for Mr. Bridge? It appears so. All right. Anything else?
No.
All right, uh, let's see. Open discussion for any other city-related topics of more interest. Mr. Cobb.
Right now, I want to know who's all going to be involved with the fireworks. Right now, that I know of is just Mr. Grimm and myself.
What, what do you mean? I'll be dedicated elsewhere. I said I won't be able to make it. I'll be elsewhere.
I mean, I can be down there in the afternoon to help you guys do whatever, um, till about seven-ish, six-ish, whatever time my wife has been. Let me know what you need me to do prior to, and.
Did he say it was just him and Grimm?
Well, the main thing will be the next day cleaning up all the trash.
Oh, yeah, next day. That's no problem.
I mean, I'm debating if we want to put barricades up.
After? Like the day after?
No. Setting them up blocking roads, since there's only going to be Mr. Grimm and myself.
I can help.
I'm not going to do that all day down there. I might go in the hospital.
No, I got you. Do we, I mean, here's the deal. Does, does counsel want to close the road early in the day or just a couple hours before the event starts? Because I mean, we, I can help out, too. It doesn't have to be all for counsel. So if I need to sit somewhere for a little bit, I'm fine with that. But, I mean.
Well, what time are they going to start setting fireworks up?
About 10:00.
Not off, but up. What time?
Nine or 9:30, I believe, if it's when it gets dark enough.
Well, I'm talking, when is the fireworks company actually going to go back there and start?
They will go back in there. They'll be in there at 7 o'clock in the morning and start putting the boxes in place.
They want to limit traffic once they get back.
And then they'll start loading the mortars by right around noon.
So that's when they have to, they're ready to load them?
Yeah, I was going to say, I would say once they start taking the mortar back there is when we probably want to.
That's when they want Brubaker and all that blocked off back there. Because they don't want any vehicles back to where they're loading.
So we get the barricades up by, you know, 11:30, 12, soon as they get back there.
I was going to go ahead and set them up with the tape and everything, and then we're going to set the trashcans over there around Howard's parking lot, keep them happy. And then, uh, after barricades are up and closed, just leave them. And then, uh, that evening, we'll have to open up all, all of the barricades. And then Sunday, we'll have to down pick up all the trash that people don't know how to hit trash cans.
I understand that.
So, what would you like us to do? I mean, we get the barricades, but do you want me down there at a certain point in time? Does someone physically need to be?
If we got down there at 11:30, we could put the barricades up, block off Mill Road and Brubaker.
Is that something that we need to block off early, or can we just block off the section that goes back to where the fireworks are early and then maybe come back up and block off Mill Road later? I don't, I don't know. I wasn't there as long as you guys were.
The last time we didn't block off until they started loading and doing the wiring.
What time was that?
That was at noon.
At noon? Is that when you started blocking people off? Okay. I mean, does someone need to be at the roadblock, sitting there with it, or can we just block it off and call it a day?
We just blocked it off, and Mr. Cook and I sit under the shade tree then.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll just come up Saturday morning. I'll have input that roadblocks out Friday. And I'll set them up and then head back home and then come back up for the event. So you're not going to have to get out there and do any of that kind of strenuous work.
Do what?
I can do that for you, so you don't have to go and do all that strenuous work. Because I think like a couple of years, you would sit out there all day, and I don't think we need to do that. So I can just, you know, set them up and then.
Well, I sit out there all day, and my buddy come get me.
We're trying to avoid that, Mr. Cobb. But yeah, I mean, that's simple stuff. We can get them set up. It's not a big deal.
Well, what I was thinking about blocking off is, last year, they started coming down behind Howard's and down behind the tower. Some of the crazy people. So what I was going to do is block off right there on the east side of the garage. Block off back there by the Babe Ruth Ball Field, Brubaker. Because we had to keep letting that woman out the last time to live right there. They kept going in that locker, and we moved back down. Block it off there on the east side of the garage. And then, uh, block it off there by the entrance to where they parked behind the ball field back there. And block it off Brubaker.
Is anyone available, like if I swing by in the city truck and pick you guys up and just, we just knock it out real quick? Can we swing by and pick you up, so you can tell us where you want them?
I'll be down there to help you. You won't take them and set everything up?
We'll have them set aside on Friday. On Friday, we'll have, we'll have a couple barricades at what could be the potential location. So if you pick your ones and you needed this one, we'll have a couple spares down there.
Well, you know, we're the back part of the ball field there where they park. I was going to put that all the way across Mill Road. Going to use barricades and tape. Block Brubaker and Mill Road completely off. And then right on the east side of the garage there between the rock and that fence, block that all off. Hopefully, nobody will try to come down the backside, or we can put a barricade there.
Okay. What time do you want me, like, just be up here at like noon, you think?
11:30 noon.
I have another person or two who'd be interested in helping. Do I just have to tell them to show up there?
Do what?
I have another person or two interested, said they'd be interested in helping.
Yeah, once, once we get the barricades up, we can all leave. And then we'll have to come back that evening. And then Fri- or Sunday, we're going to have to go and empty all the trashcans and put them back up.
So have them come about 11:30 and help set up barricades? And then what, about 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening to?
Yeah. And then Sunday, we'll get up there. Might want to get up there about 9 o'clock, so we can start picking up the trash and get that all cleaned up, get the barricades moved out.
Would reach out to the local Boy Scouts, see if they need to earn a merit badge for trash pickup? Or the council strong?
How many people we got showing up for barricades then? We got 1, 2, 3, and then Mr. Grimm's 2, 5?
Now, he's got another one, too, and Mr. Grimm does.
You know, and the dumpster will be empty, the ballpark dumpster will be empty on Thursday prior to, so it'll be completely empty.
Okay, so I'm.
So we can just throw all the trash in that.
Okay. So I'm going to go back on my word a little bit, since we have so many people showing up. Can I just bypass coming up on noon, so I don't have to come up here and come back and then show up for the event, little hour? Okay.
Uh, also, would you get ahold of, uh, what is it, Eldridge? Is that his name? Bill?
Get ahold of who?
Then one from the fireworks, Eldridge?
No, Elster.
Els.
Time we need to break them boxes up before they totally.
Oh, that made me think. And we'll have to probably get into voting of it later. We only had like 14 in the budget for the fireworks show, so the contract was executed for 12. And my guy spoke with him last week. He's wanting to know if you guys want to put a little bit more towards that show.
Sorry, your budget, I don't see why.
Well, we have 14, I think, for the whole show, so that, we got to pay, we don't pay any food vendors, we're not paying. Is Mr. Grimm, are you taking payment for your DJ services? I mean, should I just max it out at like 1,300 or leave a thousand for a buffer, or should I go up to 1,350 or?
Your budget is 14?
I think so.
And we got a 12.
You don't have a constant.
I'm looking at 14.
14, I mean, you're not, I mean, you might have some overtime, I don't know, you know, it's, it's a different line item.
Yeah, there'd be a coming out there department. It's on a special event.
You know. I mean, I'd keep a little bit of a buffer, just because you never know, but I wouldn't be afraid to go to 1,350, 1,350.
Okay. So, right, we're within the contract, but we can do that at the time?
13:50 is fine with me.
13:50.
We had 15 in the budget.
Oh, it's 15 in the budget. Should I go up to 14, you think?
For the fireworks.
15 for the fireworks?
14.
14? I'll run with that.
How many deputies you got?
I'll have to look on detail, Commander, but I think we put in for like four or five. I'll have to go back through the software and vote. 4, something around there.
Thank you, sir.
Could someone meet me this Friday or Monday? We want to double check the place we need to mow. And I want to mow it Friday and Monday, so it has a little bit of regrowth prior to the lawn.
Well, I'll meet, well, I'll meet you Friday, up there and show you.
Okay.
I can show you everything, what I got planned for the barricades.
What time do you think? Noon?
You tell me what time you want to be up there. Anything else, Mr. Cobb? Uh, they're not, are they having the, uh, two inches, Randy?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are they having the two-inch fireworks?
Um, ye, I think so.
The case?
Yeah, it's a mixture of something, but I don't remember exactly what he said. But now that we're going to add more to it, we can get the, a little bit bigger stuff, he said.
Well, he put the case the last time in the front, right there between Brubaker Farm and the grass area.
I'm not trying to be rude. I'm actually texting him because he needed to move ASAP because they were bringing a load down. So I don't want to, like, I'm coming across.
I'm done. Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else, counsel? Any other topic city-related? We'll go, we'll go down the line. Mr. Noakowski.
Um, at the last council meeting, we had mentioned that we had a, had been invited to apply for a federal grant from the USDA on composting. There's a, turns out there's a $25,000 match on that. And we have, with the minimum, the minimum on the thing was $45,000. And to do that would have gotten us way beyond what we are ready to do in terms of composting. But as I, as I thought about it, Mr. Cook has mentioned a number of times that he thought we needed to have some kind of a retreat or something to talk about what we want to see happen in the city. And I'd like to encourage that, and at that time, we can consider some options there.
Thank you. Any comments or feedback on that one?
Have, have you checked with the health department on that?
I, I, there's some rules you have to follow for the state, but there's nothing with the.
You still got something on the county health department, because you got to guarantee them that there's no vermin that can get in there. Or if somebody decides to leave the lid up, you've got to be able to make sure those vermin's get in there. So you will have to go through the county health order.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, ma'am? All right, Ms. Eggleston.
I was thinking we should bring back the coffee and donuts with counsel for what, first Saturday of the quarter?
Yeah, I can't remember what timing you had it on, but I'm all for it. It was a great event.
I think we had it like 9 to 12. I know that the dates that I had spoke to Randy about, the date in July was the shelter houses rented. But you were going to check on the fire station?
Fire station's good.
Fire station's good, so July, I'll, I'll, I'll get the dates.
Okay.
I've written down at home. But I did it the first Saturday after the first meeting of the month.
Okay.
Uh, the July one was.
July 10.
Is that what it was, Mr. Rodewald?
I'm guessing.
No.
That's the first Saturday after the first meeting.
Right.
Is it?
July 10th, yeah.
Yeah, that one's at the show, that one's at Fire Station.
So July 10th at the Fire Station? We have to advertise for that, don't we? We only got one in last, last, didn't we only get one of those in before COVID?
I think so. And then the other one was, what, 9? 10? I don't remember the date. July 10th. October. After the first meeting.
9.
What time did you say those were?
She said 9 to noon.
9 to noon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Noon. And that'll be at the Fire Station?
I mean, is it, is it okay to have it at the Fire Station, Chief? I mean, is it okay to have that many people there during?
Fire station's open to the public.
So July 10th, it would be at the Fire Station from 9 to 12, and then October 9th, it'll be here from 9 to 12. And I will.
That's a good question. I think you should ask that.
What?
Can we, at the downtown building?
Especially as long as you guys don't mind firehouse coffee.
Firehouse?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd much rather do it where we're not impeding the place. They have a run.
We haven't had an open house tour of that building since it's been done, so I think it's a great idea.
How about it, 101 instead of the Fire Station?
And I'll get with Sergeant, I'm just.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sure, you don't have an issue with a small open house on that day to show the public what we've done in that building so far. Are you good with that? Yeah, that's easy.
We have any.
Get with Penny Lane and see if we can, if they have any travel dispensers for coffee.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great idea.
Good idea.
Very good idea.
Will we have any, like, new signage or anything up by then?
It's done. I'm waiting for it to be installed at this point in time. And I also went out and got new wall, outside wall lights for them, because the ones I have on there are hideous, the gold ones that they have.
Yeah.
So I actually got somewhat period-specific, um, new ones that are black with, well, they're bronze with like a wrought iron design at top, just similar to what they would use back in the day. So we're going to get those installed.
Are we leaving the windows open on that? Are we covering?
They have curtains.
They're curtains up now, but we're not putting any vinyls on them.
Okay, that's what I meant.
It's too gaudy at some point in time.
Okay. Anything else, other Rodewald? Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Kitco, I want to thank you and your city employees for the red and blue line.
Looks good.
And also, that's in honor of our fire department and our deputy sheriffs.
I will pass that on to the guys. Thank you.
Yet they done a fine job. I finally got down to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Was you good, Ms. Eggleston?
Yeah.
Mr. Grimm, did you have anything? Mr. Vice Mayor.
I got a laundry list.
Yes, he does.
Guys, before we go on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does counsel mind if, like, because we'll have to legal advertise for that, we'd be coffee and donuts with counsel and open house for 101 South Main. Is that cool?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well, while, while we're on that, if we're going to have it downtown, you know, I think we had about six dozen donuts the last time. If you're going to have it down there, are you going to have to up that?
I just had another great idea. So the coffee, it's a Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Why don't you guys push it back to the afternoon? So the farmer's, what time's the farmer's market open?
10.
10 to 2.
What time is the coffee and donuts going to start?
9.
Start it at 10.
No way, I mean, does that make sense at Cohen, I mean, all that traffic from Farmer's Market?
You 10 to 1?
And the 1's fine.
And then go down to Christians, and then go to Christians for tacos.
Well, back to, back to the question, you know, um,
So 10?
Out here, we had one pot of coffee, which I think we ended up making a second pot. And you went through six dozen donuts out here. Are we going to have to order more donuts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many?
Double it, whatever's left over.
I'd say double it.
I mean, donut's going to go quick, especially if we got all that foot traffic from the farmer's.
First come, first served, you know.
Inside the police station.
Well.
I want to get, I want to get more cash. So the donuts are not going to be on that side. Shots fired. That's funny.
When you get pulled over tonight, let me know.
I didn't say it. You said it. That was him, not me.
So let's start like this. What is an appropriate budget for the event? We know it'll work that way, because I don't think we line item any money for these in council, do we?
Well, would you, uh, what's a dozen, what's, uh, where'd you buy the donuts from?
The IDA.
We'll get them from the lady down there.
Olive.
Take creation shots.
I can order donuts from, uh, Donut Palace.
I can also stop at Bill's on the way up.
Ooh. Oh, Lord.
Oh, look at the, look at the most popular guy right now. This guy right here.
Every one of the police officers in town will be there.
They will be there that day.
We want to do it.
We had a lot of FIFA work to do this morning.
That's up to you guys. Whatever you want me to do.
Well, we're going to do how many a year? Four?
Four years.
I'd say what, a couple hundred bucks each meeting?
We got there, a donut's a dollar nineteen, at least from Children's, I guess. Not going to frequent that place. So.
I don't know. What do you guys think for a budget? I mean, I have no clue. I don't know what was spent on the last one, but I've seen it.
Fast spots from Ms. Harris.
There's an $800 miscellaneous in the council budget, but I want to see if we've spent against it. I don't believe you have. So I'm looking on your.
200 would get us all four meetings, so.
Yeah.
We just try, try 200, I'd say, at the first one, and just kind of gauge from what kind of response you get.
So didn't someone bring the coffee maker last year?
We, we got.
We're on to live for.
And I've got some.
We're on to live for Lundy's, their coffee maker.
Festival's got some, too.
We have paid you.
You think we should need two?
$35?
Yeah. So there's plenty in there.
We'll just talk tomorrow, because it might be worth our investment to go to Sam's and buy.
How many just?
Because I think, I think that's about a 40 cup.
Yeah.
What we'll do is, I'll get with Ms. Harris tomorrow. We might just go to Sam's and buy a coffee thing that we have it, because we'll have these events for the future.
And if you're having a big meeting or something, you know, whatever.
Even a council meeting, and there's no reason why we can't do it every now and then.
Yeah.
You know, just have one that we can have.
That'd be nice.
And then, and then, uh, the donut situation, how do you guys want me to do it? We can get them local, I can stop at Bill's, whatever you want me to do.
If you want to, if you want to go to Bill's.
I'll go to Bill's. I'll be coming, I'll be up in the morning. I'll get up. I'm coming to that thing anyway, so I'll just bring the donuts.
You're, you're probably going to have to call her and.
I will do in advance.
If it's convenient on your way, that's fine with me.
It's a little out of the way, but it's a Bill donut, so.
How many donuts you going to get here plus the Mount Newt?
Well, Mount Newt is always going to be with me, so I will make room for that. I had to throw a dozen donuts out the window, buy donuts. And with Bill's, the donuts are gigantic, so instead of getting 12, I may look at getting like 10, because they are massive. Well, I don't, we'll see. I'll budget out.
Can you guys keep this within this room?
Yeah.
We'll say a word?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
There's a camera there.
Yes.
We can't keep that.
Oh, yeah, good call. Forgot. All right. Anything else on that topic? Back to you.
It's 10 to 1.
10 to 1.
Hold on. What day is this? July 10th? Let me make sure I'm here, because my schedule's been very confusing to me lately.
Yeah. So July 10th, 10 to 1, at the, at 101 Main.
Yeah.
And then the one for October 9th will be 9 to 12 here in the shelter house?
12 here.
One time, sir. All right, back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Have, Mr. Bridge, have you got the vet banners and the citizens' awards on your, veterans' banners and the citizens' award on your situation tonight?
Yeah, so the citizen aware, I think you guys, so I'm going to get a plaque made, so we have some of those. I'll get like five, six made at a time, so we can just have. That way, all we do is get them engraved. The veterans' banner, all that's going to be talked about at the 28th meeting. So I am working on developing a policy, because that's something that we, we need to get hammered down as a policy for that.
Okay, I've got applications for the vet banners from three different locations.
Oh, from other cities? And that's how I started, too.
I'll get those. Next item. I had a couple of citizens complain about Brubaker Park, and I think Mr. Kitco and the city manager talked about this. Do we, as a council, want to get rid of Brubaker Park?
As, when you say get rid of, as in do away with the park and keep the property?
Well, basically, I think it was put forth to give that property at Brubaker Park to the. the, uh, citizens and add to their property. This is a park that's a little bit hidden back here, it's a little bit of a problem for the crews to mow, and, um, we have had some dumping of brush in that park. I think Mike and I were out there along with Randy the other day.
I would like, um, I mean, that's an interesting idea, giving it back to them, but it's, it might make their yards kinda, I'm not playing, it might be a little funky, I guess, if you will. What I thought was, I know we talked about it, was just planting trees and let it, nature take it back over, keep the property, but just plant, you know, let some trees grow and just reclaim it as natural woods. It's my idea.
Well, kick it, kick that around, save it for another meeting. Okay, Mrs. Nowakowski and I talked somewhat, I think the manager and I have talked about this, uh, council retreat, and I think we need to get that going ASAP. Is it, I guess the word is, okay with council, we proceed to set this up, and I will suggest sometime in August or early September?
This would be a glorified work session, correct?
Glorified work session.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Outside or we're gonna do it there?
That's entirely up to you folks, I don't know whether we wanna have a, most other cities have a facilitator when they do this, so how much you wanna get involved with this, I don't know.
I don't know much about it.
Well, I think, I think we need to get together and figure out the direction this city's gonna go for the next ballpark five years.
Okay.
And outline where we're going with the city, uh, those type of things. We've been talking about this for better than a year, and I think it's time we either get off the horse or send the horse on over the bar. Next thing I've got on here is the charter review, I know we have a gentleman, um, up to be appointed to that tonight, we still only have four people if we appoint him, we need five. Do we need to, I guess the word is, talk with the law director on how, I wanna say this, I don't think we can circumvent the charter, but we need to get that fifth or a sixth person on that charter review and get this thing going. Um, I don't think, the charter right now does not allow a member of council to serve on that. So I think that's something we need to get taken care of. The other thing, since we are having a problem in getting the citizens to respond to several of these committees, I will throw it out for discussion of dropping the Parks and Recreation Board from five members to three. That will allow them to get themselves, uh, I guess the word is organized and get themselves going.
We have three now?